Evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Kathleen White will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catherine White. Thank you all. We, let's see. Welcome to the August 12, 2019 study session of your Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,879th regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, August 26 of this year. The only absence we have tonight is Councilman Barr, and so there will be six of us looking at our study session tonight. And do we have any Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whatever? No? Okay. There are, there is new data on Item 24, Council. And do we have any announcements from, go right ahead, Councilman Kritzman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are very quickly, in the Kritzman family, reaching what we refer to as Birthday Week, which is actually a period of 11 days where we have three birthdays. My oldest daughter, Jackie, is turning 17 today, so I'd like to say happy birthday to Jackie. My wife, whose birthday is the 16th, we'll leave the other number undisclosed on that one, happy birthday to Rebecca. And then my second oldest daughter, Anastasia, turns 16 on August 22nd. So, I thank Mr. Meakin for the reminder, as he wished his daughter happy birthday in the last meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to entertain the crowd with our Birthday Week announcements. So, happy birthday, ladies.
Happy birthday. That's great. Anyone else wishing to make some special announcements?
Well, I have a special comment to make, although he's not here. Many people on the council, many in the city, know that from time to time, my husband and I have been asked if Scott Boggs is our son. I felt a little bit better this weekend, because when my boys were at the Vietnam Wall doing some volunteering, someone asked David, who is 21, if he was Patrick's father. Patrick is 16, so I feel a little bit better now about all the times we've been asked if Scott Boggs is our son. And for the record, he is not.
Sure.
Thank God you clarified.
When he's not here.
We'll break it to him softly.
Yeah, we'll break it to him very softly. Okay, well, you know, welcome Livonia and others that did such a fantastic job on our moving wall this week. We announced that at 7 o'clock in our 7:00 meeting, but we do want to recognize it again, because I see a couple of department heads here that were very active. Director Linda McCann of our community services did a fabulous job with Mrs. Harsy, who was the chair of that as well. Mr. Ted Davis, who's our Parks and Rec Director, awesome job, Ted, thank you. And so many others. Brian Duggan, I know, was involved, and I don't want to get into names, because you get really, you know, not good. The first responder chief, our fire chief back there, did an awesome job, both the police and the fire, just magnificent. And the event brought literally thousands and thousands and thousands of people out. And if you didn't get a chance to see it, I'm sure our cable will put it on, correct? Linda, is that good? Yeah, it'll be showing it. And if you didn't get to see it, or see it in Washington, or even here in Livonia, Westland had it several years ago, Livonia's was unbelievable. DMB Landscaping did a superior job. People were able to, you know, scratch, or not scratch the wall, but scratch the name and etch it out of people that they may have known, or people and loved ones that they, someone knew as well. There was choruses, there was a Bob Hope review. I know Susie Nash and her husband went both nights, right? And they got to see the mayor with Marilyn Monroe, and, I mean, it was just fabulous. There was no stone unturned. 400, over 400 volunteers. The names were read of all the deceased as well, and a bell rang after that 24 hours around the clock. So, kudos, kudos, kudos to everyone. It really made Livonia shine. Masco, also a major sponsor, Alpha USA. And again, I don't want to get, wait a minute, I did bring my brochure. NYX, Spree, Site One, Foson, Bong, LLP, they're a law, and Carol Foson is in the military, and fabulous job. Roush, also. Nagel Paving, major sponsors, unbelievable. Aristio Construction, Marsh and McLean Agency, Wade Shows, Embassy Suites, just a whole host. And we'll, we'll get into more on the 26th. We're going to recognize a lot of these folks, the council will. So, Linda, Ted, thank you, Chief, thank you, and thank you to all of you that have family and friends that went. Just a huge success. Okay, yes, please.
And one thing, on a more serious note, that again, didn't get mentioned, of all the things in our first meeting, a fire broke out early Friday morning at the Parkview Apartments in Livonia on Ann Arbor, I believe Ann Arbor Road. And our, our fire department was on the scene immediately and rescued, rescued two people from balconies, at least two. And happy to report that there was no loss of life. There was extensive property damage. I think the chief told, mentioned to us that 12 families were displaced, but no injuries to any, serious injuries to any of the residents, and none to our outstanding fire department. So, again, thank you to the Livonia Fire Department. They, you know, every day they're out saving lives and helping people. It's not always as visible as this, but it's these things that, that really show their competence and their expertise, and remind us that they're at work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, thank you.
Excellent. And, and also, another great comment is Merriman Road is getting paved. So, that hip, hip, hooray, because that was in real rough shape, and so we want to thank Wayne County and everyone that participated in that. Mr. Zalinsik, you do a great job on all that, and we appreciate your hard work on that as well, so that we at least have car tires left. So, thank you, sir. Council Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Just recently, in the last day, day and a half or so, Livonia lost one of our prominent benefactors and businesspeople in Bob Hardees, who passed away. Bob Hardees, I don't believe he lived in Livonia, but he really did adopt Livonia as his hometown, and there was probably not a charity that he did not contribute monetarily to or with his time as well. He was due, and I believe will be, put into the Livonia Hall of Fame this coming October. So, we just want to notify the city that he has passed, and send our best wishes to his family and loved ones. And if we can have a moment of silence, Madam President?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, okay, was there anyone wishing to come up for audience communication? Anyone that would like to share with us anything that's not on the yellow agenda? I don't see anyone coming up, Council, so we'll move into our regular agenda. This is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. The council members will, however, offer either a resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may be an approving, a denying, or a referring resolution to a committee or a department for their report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered, and there are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting, which will be on August 26 of this year, here in the auditorium, where they will be officially voted on. If you'd like to participate tonight, and your item comes up, please line up to my left or my right at the podium, and please give us your name and address for the record. With that, we'll go to Item 1, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. Is Charles here? Charles, come on up. And this is for a wedding reception with a DJ on Saturday, September 7, from 5 to 12:30 a.m. Sunday, and September 8, 2019, at 19340 Merriman Court. Go right ahead, sir. What would you like to do? A little more explaining?
Yeah, sure. Fiance and I are getting married in the backyard, so I called the city a few months ago, just to ask, is there anything I need to do or let the city know? And she said, this would be the thing to do. Come here, let them know if there's a band or DJ, let them know if you've notified neighbors, and things like that. So, there is a DJ. It'll probably be a little noisier than usual on a Saturday evening. We have told all the immediate neighbors. What else would you like to know? Do you have questions?
Well, go right ahead, Council Vice President.
Well, first, we'll offer you congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It's a little early, but hopefully, hopefully you can pull it out by, between now and September 8. We're glad to have you doing this in the city, and we congratulate you. And I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Everything looks to be in order.
Thank you.
We appreciate you following the rules as well.
Sure, yeah, my pleasure.
He's a little shy, because he usually does a bachelor party, so that's why, yeah.
Well, that is my wife's birthday, so I was wondering if I could just bring her for a cheeky.
Okay, were there any others on the council? Nope. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Sir, you have an approving on consent, which means you don't need to come back. It's deemed not to be controversial, so thank you very much, and much, much congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yes, sir. Bye-bye. Okay, Item 2, and we have a new item on 24 Council as well. It's a block party. Is Karen here? Karen, come on down here, to be held on Saturday, September 7, from 2 to 10 p.m. on Flamingo Boulevard between St. Martin's and Breton, and a rain date of Sunday, September 8. Good evening.
Hello. Karen Warden, 19651 Flamingo Boulevard.
Are you planning on a bounce house, or any of those kinds of things?
No, no, we just have, just games, music, karaoke, and we live right down the street from Merriman Court, so maybe you won't be stopping at the.
That little piece of wedding cake, yeah.
That's the after-party.
Yes, exactly.
All right, and you've done this before?
Actually, this is our 15th annual.
Oh, great, great. Councilwoman White.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to offer approving on consent, if there's no objection.
Okay, approving on consent, meaning?
Madam President?
Yes?
Can I address this for one moment?
Sure.
Nothing against your thing, but this is why we do this, since we have two block parties going on at the same place. If there's an emergency, our fire department needs to know that these roads are blocked off. So, thank you very much for following the process.
Okay, no problem. Our street is a big thoroughfare, like, people zip down 7 to 8 miles, so, so we're happy for those couple hours where we can block our street off and have a party legitimately, and we always have our paperwork handy in case, because people say, I want to come through your street. And we said, no, we have permission to have it blocked off, so.
Thank you.
It's all good. All right, thank you.
Madam President?
Certainly, yes.
Can I just add that I'm not surprised, I know Kathy offered the approving resolution, that Karen is here with us tonight, and doing things to organize a party in her subdivision and advance the community. Karen is a force for energy and good in the city. She's over, always over at the rec center, a proud member of Livonia Beat. And her day job, she's over at U of M, working with sick kids at the hospital. So, just does a lot of good, and I'm not surprised that she's the one here to get this done. So, nice seeing you, Karen.
It's great, and what a, what a great hospital, too. Thank you.
We've been very busy, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. You do good work over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, anybody from the audience wishing to speak to that as well? No? Item 3, block party. Kristin, are you here? There she is, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Krista Levens, 28615 Grandin.
Okay.
We are also requesting to have a block party. It is our 33rd annual block party. Requesting to shut down Grandin between Brentwood and Harrison.
Have you been at all 33?
I've been to 29 of them, since I'm 29.
Wow.
But yeah, I got to take over.
It's true, yes. Well, great, okay. Any bounce houses there?
Yes, we will have one bounce house.
Okay, those are fun.
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution for consents. As you can see, President Toy really likes bounce houses.
Yes.
So, you might want to send her in.
I'm from Bounce.
All right.
Good luck.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Anyone from the audience? We're good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. You don't need to come back either, unless you really want to come and visit us. Okay. Item 4 is also a block party. Livonia loves block parties, and craft shows, and garage sales. We're great at that. Go right ahead, come on down.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Kathy Fatell, 14058 Edgewood, and we would like to have a block party September 28, 2 to 8, and blocking off Edgewood between Scone and Perth. And nothing big, except, you know, just games, food, and we've got a lot of new neighbors, and we had thought we should get to know the neighbors on the other end of our block.
Great.
So, we're hoping, you know, we're hoping just to have a nice get-together.
And you're in the 5-4 zip, then, right?
Yes, 148154.
There you go. Okay, good. Go right ahead, Council Vice President Jolly.
I've been appointed to approve all of these. Is this your first one? You said that you.
This is my first one organizing, but we've been there probably about 30 years, and it used to be a routine, because we had 54 kids on the block.
Wow.
And we don't have all those children anymore, and there's been big turnover. So, it's probably been about 20 years since we've had a block party.
Well, I hope you have 54 children again, in a couple years on the block. So, I'll offer an approving for consents. Congratulations, good job organizing. Have fun.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Anyone else? You don't have a rain date, right?
We do not.
No, okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't have to come back, right?
No, you don't have to come back either.
Thank you.
No, uh-uh, we'll come to you. No, I'm teasing you. Okay, great, that ends the block parties council, unless there was anyone else from the audience wishing to speak to any of that. I don't see anyone. So, we're on Item 5, which is a request for designation as a nonprofit organization. Daniel Arcoon, President of Livonia Community Swim Club, as required by the state of Michigan to obtain a charitable gaming license to allow raffle fundraisers in the future. Are you Mr. Arcoon?
I am.
Great, welcome.
9904 Loveland is my address. Yeah, we're just, the Livoney Community Swim Club, we sit out of the rec center, year-round club. We host two meets in December and February, and we'd just like to add 50-50 raffle as a way to raise some additional funds, to, you know, help pay for coaching costs, and lap, lap time in the pool, and, and, you know, added exercise equipment, that sort of stuff.
Super.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the approving, and I like your logo, too.
Thank you. I figured I had to represent if I'm.
Is it a fish?
It's a fish, koho.
Oh, well, that's great.
I guess they're fast fish, I don't know.
Yeah, that's great. Councilman Kritzman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, I left Livonia last Friday, not this past, but the one before that, and stopped up at a restaurant in the UP for dinner on vacation. Walked in, and there's somebody standing there with a Livonia LCSC shirt on, so your reach is far and wide.
I think they're actually Livonia residents on vacation, because I think I know who you're talking about.
Yep, I sat and talked to them for a little bit. And as a parent, a future likely parent of a swimmer on the team, I think Mr. Jolly probably has one that will be looking to join the team as well, but.
I know a guy that can hook you up.
Yeah, I should stick around afterwards.
What he won't tell you is, we had a race, like, two weeks ago, after the Burton Hollow Fairway Farm Swim Meet. We won't talk about who won and who lost. I think I was the big loser overall, but.
I didn't get to open in my lane, I was the anchor, in more ways than one. Thanks for coming out here tonight, we look forward to supporting this.
Okay, thank you. I don't have to come back as well? Next, I'm good.
No, has somebody made a motion?
No.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, you're so quiet down there. Councilwoman White has said on approving on a consent, meaning you don't have to come back.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Much success to you. Okay, Council, we are on Item 6. It's a designation as a nonprofit organization. Richard Rich, Treasurer, Livonia Youth Philanthropic of Michigan, as required by the state of Michigan to obtain a charitable gaming license to allow for raffle fundraisers in the future. You're not Richard.
I am not Richard.
He's hiding that there. Okay.
He keeps going, you speak, you speak.
Well, great, well, nice to have you. How you doing?
I'm the fundraising chair, Rich is our treasurer.
Awesome.
So, I'm Kathy Bilger, my address is 19170 Augusta Court. And yes, we are looking for a charitable gaming license, because we, we would like to do 50-50 raffles at our concerts. That brings in a little additional money, so that we can purchase new music for our organization, and other things to enhance the experience for all the students.
That's great.
And I would like to also say that Bob Hardees was a major sponsor of our organization. He came to our concerts, and he helped our, he helped our group, not just financially, but also with developing a master plan. Bob was a wonderful man, and we are going to miss him tremendously.
Yeah. Lot of organizations he helped, didn't he?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very, very sad time for us.
Absolutely.
Madam President?
Yes, please, Vice President Jolly.
I'm happy to offer an approving for consents. It also should be noted that the Livonia Symphony, Livonia Youth Symphony was at the wall as well, correct?
Yes, we were. The Livonia Symphony Quintet played on Saturday, and Livonia Youth Symphony brought about 25 people on Sunday.
Well, we thank you for that, and all the work you do in the community, and you also don't have to come back.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time. We appreciate everything that you do for us.
Nobody wants to come back and see us, it's really sad.
I do, I love, I'll come back, I love you guys.
Especially when you pass this for me, I really love you guys. That's right, that's right. Well, you're, you're good to go, like Vice President said, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and I hope you have a great success, in spite of everything, yes.
You have to enjoy our concerts.
Yes, we will try and do that, definitely. Okay, Council, we're on Item 7, unless anybody from the audience wanted to make comment, and I didn't see anybody rushing up. It's a request to waive the sidewalk requirement, and here you go. Yeah, here he is. Okay, Devance, how do you pronounce it?
Devance.
Devance. Custom construction for newly constructed single-family home at 16855 Mayfield Street. Go right ahead, take it away.
Good evening, Council. I'm Dean Devance with Devance Custom Construction. We built the brand-new residence at 16855 Mayfield. None of the other properties, either adjoining or in the whole subdivision, have sidewalks, and there's also a drainage ditch on the uncurbed street, so kind of a sidewalk would be an engineering hindrance. That's why we're asking for a waiver.
Madam Chair? Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
As Councilman Barr and I have taken on the role of the sidewalk police over the last couple of years, even I look at this one and think that the, this is, this is an exact scenario where a sidewalk waiver makes sense, and I will happily support approval of this item.
Great, great.
Thank you very much.
And what would you like that on, sir?
On consent, if there are no objections.
So, it's an approving on consent, and if you're an east sider, you won't have to come west, then? Okay?
Our office is in Utica, but we'll gladly come again down the 26th. Thank you very much, Council.
Okay, no problem, but you don't need to. It's on consent, unless there's any objection from any other councilperson. So, you're good to go?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to that? Seeing and hearing no one, then, we are on Item 8. Item 8 is a tax request for Plymouth Road Development Authority for the 2019 tax year. This is brought to us by our city clerk forwarding communication dated July 23 of this year, from Michael T. Slater, our treasurer of that, in setting forth the tax rate to be levied, and requesting that it be collected as part of the summer tax collection. Mr. Meakin.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I was going to offer a resolution here to suspend the rules on this item, and I offer receiving files on Items 8 through 15. So, these are all tax collection items for, the city of Livoney does for Livoney Public Schools, Clarenceville Schools, Schoolcraft Community College, Oakland Schools, Wayne County Regionalist Service Agency, and Wayne County. So, all in the state of Michigan education tax funds for the years 2019.
Thank you. Do we have support on that, to suspend the rules?
Support.
Moved by Meakin and supported by McIntyre. Was there discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing none, so we'll vote on the suspension of the rules, then, right?
No, there's no votes tonight, so we can receive and file all items on this one.
Right, we'll receive and file.
8 through 15, correct?
That's correct. Those are all tax requests, shows you how many we have there. Okay, so Item 16 is an acceptance of the proposal from our community resources. Director McKeon.
I wasn't expecting to be up there.
Pardon me.
Good afternoon, good evening, good afternoon. I'd like to ask Council to suspend rules to bid and accept the proposal for the, excuse me, the cedar shingle roof at the Hinburn House at Greenmead. This is a specialty job, most regular roofers don't even want to look at it, and we'd like to award it to Cedar Preservation Systems, the low proposal, $19,800. There is money in the Greenmead Maintenance Account to cover this.
Madam President?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll offer the approving resolution for the consent agenda for this item. It's in the budget for Greenmead for this year.
Okay, you've heard Councilman Meakin, is there any others?
And on consent, if there's no objection.
Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing no one, we have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me. Excuse me. Then, Item 17, if no one from the audience wishes to speak to that, is an acceptance of proposal, Department of Management and Information, and Parks and Rec Department. And Mr. Davis, go ahead. Excuse me.
Thank you, Council President. We are requesting that Council approve a Verizon proposal that is going to improve cell phone services for Verizon Wireless customers at the recreation center. This has been approved by Law Department, Information Services, and Parks and Recreation. All we're doing is providing electricity for the equipment on site.
Council, it's up to you.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the approving resolution on consent, if there's no objection.
Councilwoman White has offered an approving on consent. Is there any other discussion? Is there anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, then, you have an approving on consent as well, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Item 18, then, is a request to approve emergency repair. This is brought to you, to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for Bicentennial Park Walking Path, which has been unusable for a significant portion of the year. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President. Again, as you said, there's a portion of the walking path between Ben Salini Park and the Dog Park that is a low-lying area at Bicentennial, and just, the topography of the region has effectively made the path for a good portion of the year unusable. Anyone who goes to Park Run, or simply walks in the park, as I know, two of our council members participate in Park Run, one very frequently, and this has been a, this has been a topic of discussion between us for quite some time. We're at the point in the year, we simply can't place this out to bid and expect to get contractors to, to bid on this. We did receive quotes. We worked with the engineering department and we're asking that this be placed as an emergency repair so we can raise certain portions of the path, install culverts where necessary, and hopefully make this path usable year-round. I'd be happy to answer any of Council's questions on this.
Council Vice President Jolly.
Madam President, I don't know what I will do with all the time I'll save not texting him every weekend pictures of the path flooded over. But like you said, you know, we do a lot of really special improvements and special projects from the All-Access Playground to the Dog Park. This is something as simple as the path is really impassable, probably half the year due to rain and snow and everything else. And some of the people who live around there and simply want to walk down the designated path to go to the Dog Park cannot do so without getting ankle-deep in water, not only on the path, but on the grass as well. So I'm sure they'll thank you as, as will everybody else you already mentioned. I think it's, it's a well-needed improvement. It's, it's not really a luxury. It's, it's a simple housekeeping thing that
It is.
I, I thank you for doing. Thank you.
And also next year, we'll add that we will do the same thing at Dooley and at Clement Circle. We're in our low-lying areas there. So we've taken a hard look at those and obviously, you know, this was an extraordinary spring with the amount of rain we had, but it, it is fairly consistent and we do need to do something with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's for consent if there are no objections.
For consent, okay. All righty. Any others from the council? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, then that's approving on consent, Mr. Davis. 19 then is a request to waive the formal bidding process and authorize a purchase of two Lucas chest compression systems from sole source provider. This is brought to us from our fire department to provide the community the state-of-art and highly efficient CPR and improving patient care from budgeted funds. This is an excellent thing. Thank you, Mr. Chief, for bringing that.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow councilmembers. I am here requesting approving, approving resolution to purchase the final two Lucas devices, which will go on our frontline ambulances. So each one of our five stations in, throughout the city will have one of these devices on their responding units, one per station. Some of you got to use this device earlier in the, the spring at the Fire Ops 101 program and I think you were able to see or at least gain a little bit of appreciation towards the purpose of the, the device itself. And the time has come now to where we, we would like to make a final purchase to get the last two that we need.
Awesome. Great. Direction? Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre?
I will offer the approving resolution on consent if there are no objections. We've seen the value of these. Anything that saves lives and increases our great fire department's ability to save lives is an appropriate expenditure and this technology is proven and we know it works.
Absolutely.
If there are no objections.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Meakin?
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, do we have a couple going on next year's budget as well so we can equip the reserve vehicles so we have backups?
We will add those on next year as well, yes.
Okay, yeah, because this is, when we went through Fire Safety 101, saw how important this device really is and it's necessary to have every truck available have one of these on there, so glad to see that. Looking forward to seeing it in the 2020 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, we have an approving on consent. Were there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this as well? No? All righty. Item 20 then is also from our Livonia Fire and Rescue. It's a request to waive the formal bidding process and authorize a purchase of one powered load COT fastening system from sole, sole source provider. Chief, go right ahead.
Correct. So this device is the device that slides in the floor of our ambulances. We have a new ambulance on order. We expect to take delivery of it here hopefully about October. And this device will be added to the, the floor system. It essentially lifts and pulls the stretcher into the vehicle for us, making it for, more safe for the patient transport, more safe for our firefighters to prevent injuries. All of our other frontline apparatus, including our reserves, have them currently installed in them and this will just standardize our fleet throughout our department.
Council, direction, pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to offer the approving resolution on consent if there's no objection.
Okay, thank you. And is Stryker one of the only companies that make this or?
Stryker's the only company that makes this device, yes.
Okay. Also the Lucas one?
There's a competitor out there, but it's not the same device.
Okay.
It's a, it's a similar concept, but nowhere near as streamlined or efficient or user-friendly as the Lucas device.
Super. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have an approving on consent. Anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. 21, request to approve the establishment of an improvement bonds Engineering Division. Go right ahead. Mr. Zalinsik.
Madam President and City Councilmembers, as you know, we got a new development going in on Ann Arbor Trail just east of Wayne Road called Dover Court Site Condominiums, 17-site, 17-home development there. We're just asking for housekeeping regarding the bonds, obviously protect ourselves in case something does happen, but looking for your approval on the general improvement bonds. Obviously, we'll be bringing forward to you in the near future the SAD for street lighting. We anticipate three streetlights that'll be going in there in the near future, but just looking for your approval again to follow the ordinances and get the general bonds taken in. And then obviously when they're completed, we will refund them, come back to you for their approval for their, for refunding back to the developer, Leo Solve. Thank you.
Yes, go right ahead, anyone?
I'd be happy to offer the approving resolution on consent if there are no objections. And just to clarify for anyone listening at home, these are bonds that, these are not obligating the city to pay money. This isn't a bond that the city issues that, that generates funds for us, but these are bonds that the city requires to ensure that a developer completes the work that he or she is committed to doing in a new development. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, we have an approving on consent. Anybody else from the audience? Okay, going to move on to 22. Council, this is an award of contract brought, brought to us from the Engineering Division for Hubbard Road Shoulder Improvement Project, Contract 19E, from Buchanan Elementary to Six Mile Road at the 2019 asphalt road program pricing from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalinsik.
Madam President, this is the plans that the Engineering Department did. We did them in-house in order for us to look at extending the shoulder, widen the shoulder on Hubbard Road on both east and west side from Buchanan entrance going north to connect to Rotary Park, obviously with the new playground that was constructed last year. Unfortunately, the first bids, we got no bidders and then we bid it out in the spring, in February, and then expensive, so we decided to scale back the project and construct the east side from Buchanan going north, saw cutting one foot existing shoulder off, adding six feet of asphalt pavement, allowing for pedestrians to walk, people that want to bike, connectivity up to obviously Rotary Park. The goal is to provide a connectivity down to Five Mile to the rec center as it was intended back in the 2015 Bike Walk Study. Again, funding and other availabilities will, will come forth. So looking for your approval for nagel paving. We actually bid the original project, but we had to scale it back to fit the budgeted funds to do this project this fall. They'll be working on Phase 3 streets, which are, which are north of Five Mile, so it's perfect timing to get this completed. Obviously, school's starting here shortly and get the connectivity that we need and wanted back in the, the program. If any further questions, I'll be happy to answer those and look forward to your support.
Great. Council Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Really thank you to Mr. Zalinsik and Mr. Davis who've kind of really gotten the ball rolling on the walk-bike Livonia plan. As we have more and more new residents and residents who've been here for a long time, things that we hear over and over again is connectivity. With this, well, almost with this project, since it doesn't go all the way yet, you will be able to go on a path from Bicentennial almost all the way to the rec center and hopefully we can do the rest of the path there in the near future and then expand it out from there and ultimately make some kind of big loop through Livonia that could be a walking, biking path and running as well. So thank you for actually following through on this, not that you wouldn't anyways, but this is a great improvement to the city. So I'll offer an approving for consent.
Great. Council Vice President offer approving on consent, Councilman Meakin?
Thank you, Madam President. There's a number of residents that I've been in touch with over the years that live off of Hubbard that have been looking forward to this expansion. I've had one individual who's contacted me on a yearly basis that says, you know, this is a developed area now and, you know, back in the old days, there were horse farms on Hubbard and other farms up and down the road, so it's a developed subdivision and usually we require sidewalks and there just isn't room for sidewalks. So getting this extra couple of feet for connectivity is extremely important. Like Council Vice President Jolly mentioned, the connectivity of Livonia is key to our growth in the future. So I'm glad we're able to get the first half of this done and I look forward to seeing the next half very soon, but Rachel will be happy to go. We're halfway there. We'll, we'll get the rest, next half in next couple of years. Thank you.
That's great. Good point. I live three houses from Hubbard Road right there, so I welcome this immensely because, and so will the deer, incidentally. And there's a string that runs through there, which I'm sure you're aware of. So as you come down, how do you address that bridge as you come down with the asphalt, Mr. Zalinsik? I know it won't happen now, but in the future, I just wondered, how, how do you navigate that?
Well, we'd probably be, we'll expand the bridge for pedestrian, either pedestrian bridge that's separate from the bridge itself or work, work it on the shoulder, but similar to what's going to be happening in the near future on Five Mile Road over 275. They're looking to extend that bridge, so
Okay.
We'll look at options and the funding that's needed to complete that task, but we want to make sure it's safe, wide enough for, you know, two-way traffic, whether it's bicycle, bicyclists or people that are walking, to get across that area safely. There is a, obviously a great difference as you go up along that barrier and our goal is to make it obviously safe, probably like we did at the bridge at Tannajin Park, you know, something to that, to that effect where we can get these pedestrians across safely for that connectivity down to the rec center.
That's great. That's great because with our universal playscape and, you know, at the end of Hubbard there, that'll be awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we have an approving on consent. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to that? Hearing and seeing no one. Item 23 then, everyone we're on, a request for a waiver of extension. Mr. Toramina, I'm gonna let you do that because my throat is not cooperating.
And this is a request by Speedway, who was granted waiver use approval in, I believe, July of 2018 to reconstruct the facility at Seven Mile and Bethany. They were, unfortunately, did not commence construction within the one-year deadline, so that is the reason why they're here requesting the, the extension. And I believe plans are to begin in sometime scheduled for, for next year, next April. And with that, I think Ms. Goss can answer any other questions that you might have regarding this project.
Ms. Goss, could you give us your name and the address for the
Yep, Mandy Goss.
Excuse me.
No, Mandy Goss. I'm with CESO, 13060, Old US 27, DeWitt, Michigan, 48820.
Okay. Council, questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
From my perspective, this is a project that we've already gone through and vetted. It's unfortunate they weren't able to get it executed in this construction season, but recognizing the difficulties of trying to execute the construction during winter conditions and winter months, I think it makes sense for them to be granted the extension and I will offer an approving resolution. And unless there are objections from council, I would like to ask that that be placed on consent.
Great. Anyone else? You have an approving on consent, I would just go away happy.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All righty, is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to that before she leaves the building? Okay, all righty. All right, really good. Thank you, Ms. Toramina, for your help on that one. Okay, item 24 is a waiver petition, Planning Commission by Livonia Healthcare Real Estate, LLC, to demolish an existing nursing home, St. Jude, and construct a new building in its purpose of operating a nursing and physical rehab facility, Mission Point Livonia, on the north side of Ann Arbor Trail. Excuse me, between Joy Road and Stark Road in, in the southeast quarter of Section 33. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. So this is a petition involving the redevelopment of the St. Jude Nursing Home property, which is on Ann Arbor Trail. This is a facility that has been in existence since at least 1965 or there's been a, a nursing home at this location since then. The, the new owners propose to completely demolish the existing facility and reconstruct, not increasing any beds. The current bed count, which is 64, would, would remain at the facility. It would be a much larger facility. The main purpose is to offer additional private rooms and expand the, the services at this location. So the ordinance requires several, there are several requirements that pertain to this particular use. The property is owned OS Office Services and on, for this type of facility, the minimum land area requirement is one acre plus an additional 500 square feet per bed. This is a 1.6-acre parcel that would limit the bed count to 51, but as I indicated, this is, they want to retain the 64 beds on site. That would require 1.73 acres, so that is something that council does have the authority to, to waive that, that minimum land area requirement. I think most everyone is familiar with this property. It is, it has residential to the west, to the east, and to the south. The Middle Rouge Parkway is located directly to the, to the north of the site. This is an aerial photograph that gives you an idea of what the existing facility looks like, its footprint. You'll notice that the access, main access to the site comes off Ann Arbor Trail and the parking is located on the east side of the property. There's secondary access located on Stark Road. This is the, the site plan for the new facility. You can see it's a much larger building. The building itself would have a footprint area of 44,000 square feet, or excuse me, a gross floor area of 44,000 square feet. It is a two-story building. It would change from, I think, 27-bed facility or 27-unit facility, which includes a mix of two, three, and in some cases, four bedrooms to, per unit, to 58 units, most of which would be one-bed, one-bath units, 52, and then there would be six two-bed and one-bath units. Additional amenities would be included as part of the development. There is also a limitation on lock coverage. It's 45%. In this case, they're showing 63.75%, which will require a variance. In terms of setbacks from the front yard, which is Ann Arbor Trail, the requirement is 40 feet and at minimum, they're showing 70 feet, so it complies with the front yard setback. However, along Stark Road, the minimum requirement is 25 feet and the plans show a setback at the closest point of 16 and a half feet from the right of way, which again will require a variance. You'll note that one of the reasons this variance is being requested is for the additional room on the east side of the property to obtain fire access and that would be in the form of a, a road that would provide the necessary emergency vehicle access to, really a completely around the building. And that is shown along the, the east property line. The required parking for this facility is 38 spaces. Again, this changes, this plan, you'll have access coming in off of Stark Road as opposed to Ann Arbor Trail. This is primarily for safety purposes. As you're aware, this is a tight corner located at this part of this stretch of Ann Arbor Trail. There would, of the 34 required or 38 parking spaces provided, 28 would be located on the, on the front of the property. There's an additional 10 spaces located behind the building where most of the services would be located. They do meet the, the minimum parking requirements, which in this case, the minimum would be 34 spaces. Stormwater detention is still being worked out, the details, but it would appear that that would be primarily underground and would be located along the west side of the property. The landscaping constitutes 28% of the property, so that exceeds the, the minimum 15% requirement. There is a fully detailed landscape plan that was submitted with the application. This plan did change based on recommendations of the, of Planning Commission. Sidewalk has been added along Ann Arbor Trail and as a result, some of the existing mature trees in that area, because not only the sidewalk is going in, but also the parking lot, those will have to be removed. So new landscaping provides for frontage trees as well as shrubs to help shield the parking lot from, from the residents on the opposite side of Ann Arbor Trail. Additionally, there were a row of arborvitae's added along the east side of the property where this property lies adjacent to existing single-family homes. There's an existing wall there currently, but the arborvitae's were added as an additional method of screening. There is, white site lighting would be limited to 15 feet in this case and again, dumpster and other services are provided on the north side or the rear part of the building. Planning Commission is recommending approval of this item as provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Toramina? Guess not. Okay. Then we'll go to the petitioner. Sure. Go right ahead. Your name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Roger Moly. I'm at 721 Elmwood, Troy, Michigan. And I'm here on behalf of the petitioner and the new development group. I think Mr. Toramina did a good job of recapping the project, which is at maybe a higher level from a development perspective. As this council knows, this project has been in several iterations in front of, in front of this group over the last year. And I think I'll, if you can recall, we were looking to do this development at a, another site at Wayne Road in Ann Arbor Trail and for a variety of reasons, you know, particularly with zoning, we weren't able to do that. We're now sort of back here. We've done, I guess, almost a 360-degree where we're looking to do a development at this particular site. One of the key critical components to this development, this transaction revolves around the certificate of need and the nursing home bed licenses. So this particular project is an acquisition of the real estate and the nursing home bed licenses. It will be a cease of operation of the current St. Jude Nursing Center business and, and full, as, as was already stated, full demolition of the property. I have submitted information through the treasurer, through the planning. I know that the, the council and the city has been very concerned with this development with respect to the delinquent property taxes. Um, so just to address that on the front end, um, this property is being sold and both the, all of its assets liquidated pursuant to a bankruptcy plan, which has been approved by the bankruptcy court and as part of that plan, it, uh, mandates that in order to consummate this transaction, the, uh, purchasing group, which I'm a part of, must pay all of the delinquent property taxes. Um, also as part of that, it was, um, mandated that the development group had to, uh, pay a deposit to Wayne County of sixty-five thousand dollars by July first, which this group did do. Um, also, the, um, treasurer of the city of Livonia had requested that all, uh, personal property taxes be brought current, which, uh, this group, this group did do. Um, so where we are right now with this particular project is we have received our certificate of need. Um, so we do have, after, you know, lengthy negotiations, really over, you know, years, year, multiple-year basis with the state of Michigan, um, as we do finally have the certificate of need in hand to close this building permanently, um, do the demolition, uh, preserve the, the bed licenses and then, uh, continue with this development. And just as, you know, we would fully expect, I know it was a condition out of the Planning Commission, that the payment of property taxes would be paid as a condition of, of the approval and, um, just, just likewise, as a condition of the development and of course, procuring lending and financing and the other things we need to do, we'll have to have clean title to the property. Um, so I think that's the, maybe, the, I know was the largest business issue of concern. Um, and if you'd like, I can address that or I can go into more on the project or I can just answer questions.
Um, it's up to the council. Um, does, do, does anyone have any questions? Go right ahead, Council Vice President.
So you said the appropriate things. In terms of timeline, when would the back taxes be paid?
Uh, the back taxes would be paid, so in, uh, I'm just trying to get this day, so if, if this were approved, I guess it would be April twenty-sixth. We would anticipate, I'm sorry, April, excuse me, August, August. So if it was approved, we would anticipate closing on the acquisition of the property forty-five days, um, uh, after the approval. Um, and I think, and maybe to back up, we were, uh, sort of planning and we were in position to close, uh, in fact, this summer, um, but for a variety of reasons, one of them, you know, being, you know, the, the, the delay in, in obtaining the approvals for the site plan and the entitlements on the property, um, we've had to push the closing. Um, but that would be our anticipated timeline.
Madam President, if I can direct a question to Mr. Bernier. But we are legally able to put a condition that requires the taxes to be paid before any work is done, correct?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
And I, I talked to the attorney representing, uh, Wayne County and we went through the deal, as did the treasurer on this. We see this as the best opportunity to make sure the taxes are paid. I know there is one concern, I think the treasurer had, is we have the summer taxes that are coming due also, that aren't part of this amount. So I think the treasurer had some concerns about that. Am I correct?
But I'd address them with him.
Oh, okay.
Right, and, and to address that, the way that the order i- is, um, because of course we did this before the summer taxes, but I, I think it's very clear that all taxes must be paid and we would, uh, obviously, we would expect that as a condition to approval that, you know, all delinquent or current property taxes be, be paid and that's what we had anticipated on doing, so.
Okay.
Wasn't the intention of just paying the delinquent and, and allowing future to accrue.
Okay. I would just ask the city attorney to make sure that that is in the approving resolution.
I will make sure that that's in the approval resolution.
Councilman Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure if this is to Mark or the Law Department, but, um, Mark, how do we approve a site plan with significant variances that need to come from the zoning board of appeals? What if he's denied those variances and we've approved a site plan that is in excess of our ordinances? How do we go about doing it that way?
Well, quite frankly, it's no different than, uh, many site plans in which we conditionally approve, uh, subject to, uh, variances being granted by the zoning board of appeals. Um, effectively, the site plan is null and void. If those variances aren't granted, they'd either have to amend the site plan to eliminate those variances, which could possibly trigger a re-review on your part, depending on the magnitude of the changes, uh, but it would have to, it would, they would require, uh, the variances as, uh, subsequent to the, uh, approval of the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from the council wishing to speak to this before we go to the audience? Uh, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item? You didn't see none?
No one.
Yes. Did you want to speak?
No.
Why you say who made the motion? Because I didn't have a name. He said no one yet. That's why I'm...
No one's made anything at this point.
That was where I was at.
It's very quiet in here at the moment.
It was really quiet if you heard that too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, well.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, I'm gonna offer three resolutions, an approving, a denying, and a committee of the whole. And we got another couple of weeks to decide which way we're gonna go with this.
Okay. We have three. You got it? Yep. Anyone else? Yes, Councilman Kritzman.
Uh, just a, a couple of quick comments. I mean, obviously, this project has, um, has gone through several iterations as we've, have, we've worked to make our way through it. Um, what's striking about this one is that the amount of the variance that's being asked for, what we heard in some of the other iterations, uh, I believe on the other site, was you've got two-story building right up next to existing one-story, um, homes, uh, there was concern that was about privacy and things of that sort. Um, it's, it, it's honestly shocking to me and probably I'm not the only one up here that there isn't more audience here talking about the project at the moment. Um, architecturally, I don't have any issues with the building. I think it looks nice. I think your last version looked nice as well. I think contextually, it'll work well on the site and on the property from, uh, from an aesthetic standpoint. I just do have some bit of concern about the sheer volume and magnitude of the project. You know, but I think it's the, um, the footprint or the, the lot coverage, Mark, I believe was supposed to be at about forty and we're at sixty-two.
Forty-five percent is the, uh, max.
So forty-five, that's not as bad as I had initially thought, but still, that's a pretty significant swing and so you can understand from our standpoint, it just takes a little bit of study.
So, and I, just to maybe give more color to that, I mean, one of the, um, one of our competing challenges is of course, you know, we need the number of beds to make the project feasible, otherwise we could cut it back. And also with the design standards, which are, are good in the respect is that they force us to have, um, you know, private rooms with private bathrooms. Um, so that is, you know, really, one of the things that we're, you know, also trying to accommodate is that in order to make the project work and to have the sixty-five beds. Um, as far as the, the, you know, with the comments, you know, the variances, we did work extensively with the engineering department, the planning department, to really come up with this site plan and moved the building location, you know, really at their recommendation and also removing the, um, the curb cut off of Ann Arbor Trail. So we, we tried to, you know, really accommodate a lot of the city's requests with the, um, with the variances, particularly with the setback. Um, the footprint is what it is and, and that's really just a function of how big the, you know, building needs to be to accommodate, um, the, the number of residents there. Um, and then I would say, as, as far as the residents in the neighborhood, we have had conversations with the residents. This has been through planning, um, the Planning Commission, uh, several times, so we have had individual conversations with them and our engineers communicated with them. And I believe, you know, again, residents can speak for themselves, but I mean, I think what we're doing is we're obviously, um, tearing down what we believe is a, you know, a, a functionally obsolete, um, I-SOR building and replacing it with what we think will be, uh, of, of course, a first-class building and very, um, harmonious with the rest of the neighborhood there. Um, from a timing perspective, and I, 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 obviously, I know that the council's gonna do what it is, we're, we're kind of getting into the, we're, we're sort of running out of time here with what we're gonna do with this and, and, um, uh, so it's just, we have a lot of different approvals coming in, of course, with the city council, with the state of Michigan, um, with the, uh, the certificate of need. We're also working with the state of Michigan, the license department with respect to the, the actual closure of the building. So, you know, part of the, I guess, getting this development together is getting all of those pieces on track at the same time.
Thank you. Well, you have three different, uh, approving, a denying, and committee of the whole, I hear. So, uh, I believe we're gonna hear this again on the twenty-sixth, unless there's any other comments from the council and that's what I hear happening, sir.
Okay. I don't, uh, maybe just from my clerk, what does that mean, there's three resolutions?
There, well, somebody could offer an approving that night or a denying or, yeah, a committee of the whole, sir.
Understood, okay.
Yes, sir. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Alrighty, anyone for the audience? If we don't have anyone, then we'll move on. Thank you very much, though. Okay, uh, let's see, where are we? We're on item twenty-five. Excuse me, this is a site plan petition, Planning Commission Petition two zero one nine zero six zero eight ten, submitted by CBL and Associates on behalf of Dunham's Sports to renovate the exterior of one of the units of Laurel Park Place Shopping Center located on the northwest corner of Six Mile and Newburgh Road, uh, in the southeast quarter of section seven. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. A Laurel Park Place is in, uh, is located within one of the city's seven special area development control, uh, districts and, uh, as a result, um, the, any exterior alterations that take place, uh, to any of the buildings is subject to Planning Commission review and, and city council approval. Um, as I think most everyone knows, uh, Dunham's Sporting Goods is, uh, locating, uh, or will be the new tenant of what was formerly, uh, the, uh, Carson's space, uh, at the north end of the mall. They'll be occupying a significant portion of the first floor of what was previously, um, Carson's and, uh, as part of, uh, the improvements, leasehold improvements, uh, to this space, they are proposing exterior alterations. Uh, the rendering that you're looking at, uh, on the TV is the east elevation of that space, so this is the side of the building that faces Newburgh Road. Um, the, most of the building will remain, uh, its current, um, uh, color, uh, the, the, beige-colored brick, although it appears as a lighter brown on this rendering, is actually a, a lighter, uh, beige-colored brick. Uh, what changes, however, is the front entryway and, uh, with that, uh, with those changes would include, uh, painting, uh, the surrounding, surrounds around the main entryway. Uh, those would go from a light color to a much darker brown. Uh, some of the framing around the windows would also be painted, uh, dark brown or actually would be wrapped, um, as opposed to painted. Uh, and then looking at the upper part of the facade where the sign is located, uh, you'll see the changes there. That would include, um, corrugated metal backing, uh, with the, uh, the proposed Dunham's Sports sign or main identification, uh, sign. Um, that's pretty much the extent of the, uh, the changes. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed this at their meeting a couple of weeks ago and is recommending, uh, approval of the plans as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, questions for Mr. Toramina before we go to the petitioner? Anyone? No? Uh, Mr. Petitioner, your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Michael Lee. I'm with Casco Plus R five, twelve Sonnen Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one four three. And we are the architect for CBL, so I'm here to answer any questions, but what we are trying to do is change the facade to make this look like a sporting goods store as opposed to a, um, department store.
Okay, great. Alrighty, um, ladies and gentlemen, um, any questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Councilman Kritzman.
Um, just some, some background, as I'm making my, you know, as I made my way through the drawings earlier, I guess I was looking, trying to understand what the configuration would be inside the space. Is it the intent for Dunham's to take the entirety of what was formerly Parisian or only a fraction of it?
Dunham's will occupy roughly a third of the existing space, so that being said, we're gonna take one entry and the other two will remain until that area is leased out.
Would that be first floor?
It's first floor and it's on the mall side of it. The first two column bays in from the north are, are gonna remain unoccupied and, um, leasable area for future tenant.
Sir, you indicated that Dunham's would be taking over, you said, one of three entrances?
That's correct.
So the other two, one being on the north side, would be a separate tenant space?
Correct. And then the west entry as well.
So the west entry, according to this floor plan, and I'm not sure if you guys did the floor plan or somebody else did?
We did. It's, it's going to remain a mall, uh, CBL-controlled access point and we can use that for, uh, the upstairs if that were to develop. There's a freight elevator over there and we've got room for a future passenger elevator.
It looks to me like all of that is in some sort of back corridor, like it won't be accessible by the public. Is that accurate?
No, sir. Um, if you look at the drawing, the, the entry is to the, uh...
Left.
Left. And then we would have a passenger elevator there.
All right, well, let's go in that front door. Walk, walk me through that door back there, which is just off the top of the screen there, Mark.
Yeah, I'll just slide it down. So this is, this would be the access point for the upper level.
For the upper level?
Upper level.
So this does not come into Dunham's?
That is correct.
I don't even know how you're meaning your exiting requirements in this floor plan. I guess you got one off the top side there?
Yeah, that corridors.
So regardless, we're not here to, to, to litigate the code requirements of it. I was just trying to understand what they're doing with that space. Um, this is weird, to be blunt. This is a strange configuration of what we've always seen as a single entity sort of space and that's what we're used to. When you look at it from the outside, you indicated that the intent of the design was to make it look like a sporting goods store and I think it looks like you are repainting a department store and adding some corrugated siding to the top of it, which kind of sums up about everything that's going on here. Am I right?
We're changing the, uh, storefront look to kind of conform with the rest of the tenant space out there at the mall. It's all a dark bronze, dark brown. This is an older department store with white, so we're trying to update it there without changing the exterior.
But you're, so if you're changing the storefront, why would you keep the same diamond configuration that's out there now?
It's...
Or you're just painting it?
We're, we're gonna change the color of it.
Okay, so you're not changing the storefront, you're painting it.
We're not changing, right.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I, on the surface, I don't mind there being Dunham's in the mall. I think I've seen, uh, larger tenant spaces carved up. We've seen that across the country. We see these anchor locations not being able to, to sustain themselves. Um, I just think this, what's being presented is a, um, is not enough. It's not enough to really and truly make it look like an investment's being made in the space. Uh, it looks to me like your intent is to paint everything that's there now, take down the Carson's sign, put up some corrugated metal siding, and change the sign. And that, to me, is not indicative of, uh, a successful investment in this location. That's just one person's opinion. Um, I'd love to hear what other people have to say there, but I just, I'm struggling with the design on this one. Uh, is there a Dunham's, um, standard, a prototype, something? I saw some additional image, so take like the one in the bottom right. Is that, is that something that has been done in multiple locations, something that's... I mean, by, by what I'm looking at there, the only standard is the red lettering on a galvanized metal background. That archway with the three vertical elements on each side, you see that in the lower right picture, you see that in the middle one on the left side? It's potentially in the middle one on the right side? Is that a, a, a standard, a prototype, a branding element?
The, the metal that you identify is one of their branding elements. The wood surround, basically, is done to fit whatever the storefront or store of whatever strip center or mall tenant, um, whatever is available, they do different things. With the repurposing of this building, this is a two-level building that we're doing and what you're looking at are single-story spaces. But to answer your question, yeah, we're trying to brand this the same.
You can look out the second story right there in that location, can't you?
No, sir.
No?
No. It's all enclosed. The storefront goes up, but it's, uh, an enclosed vestibule.
On the second level?
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I agree with everything that Mr. Kritzman said. Oftentimes, people up here, each of us has our own point of reminiscing about what, what something it once was in Livonia, right? And the fact that, number one, the space had such a struggle to get a tenant, I like that Dunham's is going in there. I think it's some variety, it's a little bit of a difference, but this just shows what the market for retail is facing, that there are no longer these, you know, big-box stores that can be really kept going, right? The last thing I would ever want for Livonia or Laurel Park is for the development of the sites to look haphazard. And although I can't explain it the way that he does as an architect, it, it just doesn't look right. I, and, you know, I, I live somewhat close there, where I pass it on a daily basis, and I feel like that would just kind of stick out, and it would kind of look haphazard. So, that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Was there anyone else wishing to speak?
Madam Chair, to keep this going in, with the void of additional conversation at this point, I will offer a resolution to send this to the Committee of the Whole, as well as approving and denying resolutions.
Okay.
And ask that this be placed on the regular agenda, obviously.
Madam Clerk, do you have that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess I would, I would throw the chair to the petitioner. I would, I, I, I think there are, there's an unending amount of solutions here that you could come up with, that I could come up with, but I can spend other people's money all day long. I'm not in the position to do that. I think it would be who view to take the comments of counsel and, and Mr. Jolly and speak with the folks on your end, whether they be in the audience or elsewhere, just to explore additionally what, what might be done to change up the approach to this.
Madam President.
Okay, yes, please, go ahead.
Sir, do you have a representative with you from CBL?
Actually, it's from Dunham's. This is Bob Sharing, he's from Dunham's. He'd like to speak about the corporate image.
But do you have a representative from CBL, though?
Yes, we do.
Can I ask him a couple of questions?
Sure.
Because kind of what discussion that I was looking for is, what's the overall objective of the rest of the, the square footage here?
Still to be determined.
Now, that, that's not the answer I'm looking for, sir.
No, well, I, I, I don't have the answers. They're exploring multiple uses in the leftover space.
I mean, what, what, what have you explored so far?
And, and would you mind sharing your name and your, your position with CBL?
Yes, Jeff Allen, Director in Development with CBL. As far as the leads that leasing has on it right now, I don't think they have a lot of leads, but retail or office.
And do you have other options for the other two-thirds of this space?
That's what I'm talking about.
So, nothing in the works?
No, not at this, not at this time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sir, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Sharing. I'm Construction Manager for Dunham's Sports. But I want to clear up on this, is that, that those examples you had of the storefronts here, those are, are corporate storefronts. We have two signature storefronts. One is the rectangular design, and the other one is the arch design. Okay? What we're trying to do is work into the existing building that we have here in order to still give us the, the look of the Dunham's Sports. Somebody, I think it was Mr. Kritzman, that said, is worried about what we might be doing inside that space. Corporate decision on this was that this is a very important space for Dunham's. They're using this as their number-one showcase for our, our whole system. We have over 250 stores across the country, 14 different states, and they want to use this as an example to our vendors and everything as to how we want to present our goods. So, I know you're focusing on that storefront, but what we're trying to do is focus on what we have to work with on that storefront. We have a height, and we have a distance off of Newburgh Road with a berm protecting. So, I think the best use of what we had there on the design was we bring our sign up to the Carson's and the Parisian sign, so that it can be seen over the berm as you're driving by. If you're standing on the sidewalk in front of our store on that east entrance, you can see only the tops of cars, the roofs. So, that height that we have there is really very important that we have. And I just want to express enough again that this is meant to be a showcase for us in Livonia.
Thank you. Councilman Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Are you able to tell me how long the leases that Dunham's is looking at having for the site?
Well, I don't go into the lease. Do you know what the lease is for the, it's usually like five-year leases and multiple leases?
I think from my perspective, and I'm not trying to be negative here, from my perspective, this closely resembles a space that you're taking momentarily. It doesn't look like a long-term investment. It doesn't look like a showpiece. The height is fine. I don't think any of us are complaining about the height. It's the investment around the sign. I don't even care, the sign's fine. Dunham's Sports, that's fine. I, I have nothing to say about that. It's everything else, looks like there's zero investment. And that's, and that's the problem, because, again, this is, you know, this is Laurel Park Mall. It's not a, it never was, and it's not intended to be a cheap-looking place. And I think this presents it as a cheap, momentary kind of transaction. We'll take this space for now. That's what it looks like. So, if you're gonna be there for five years, you might want to spend some money, or talk to them, and if they're not allowing you to do something, make it look like it's an investment in the community, in the mall, and I, you know what? I hope that your presence there helps the rest of the mall. I really, truly do. But in order for that to happen, it can't look like this. It can't look like it's a momentary transaction.
Well, first of all, it is not a investment initially by Dunham's. First, it's a huge investment by CBL. So, what they're doing inside, and if you haven't been to the location, or if you can't remember what the Carson's look like, it is a major, major renovation on the interior.
I appreciate that. I mean, for, for lack of stressing my, I feel like I grew up at this mall. Okay? I could probably draw you the inside of the mall, okay? And I can tell you what was in every single storefront inside the mall for the last 20 years, probably. Right here and right now, we're concerned with the outside. So, whatever you guys have to do to get the inside right and functioning, you gotta do that. You gotta make the outside look well as well.
Along with that, I built the mall. I was with Showstack at the time. A gentleman by the name of Mike Pozzanelle and myself, we were Vice Presidents of Showstack.
Yep.
Okay? So, we know what investment Showstack made in this, we know what we intended to do in this, and what the present owner is doing here, he's, he is fighting a dilemma on the fact of, and you mentioned it earlier, that those large anchor stores are gone. Dunham's Sports at a 50,000-square-foot store is now, a done, is a major player, and whereas 50,000, when we built in 1988, 50,000 was a junior anchor. And now, those guys are gone, and they're just, and I think it's attributed to how Dunham's does their business, that we're growing like that, and whereas all these other ones are kind of fading off to the side. You have Gander Mountain, you have...
Again, happy Dunham's is coming. This is an opportunity to better the whole mall and attract other businesses inside, and that kind of goes hand in hand, right? So, if you built it, thanks for coming back home, help us save it.
This is home, too, yes. This is home.
Thank you. Let's move on to Councilman Meakin and then Councilman McIntyre.
Okay, well, first off, Dunham's has been part of Livonia for many, many years. We've had stores here on both sides of Plymouth Roads, as long as I can remember. You mentioned that you wanted this to be a showplace for Dunham's. What other activities are you gonna be doing in there? Are you getting creative with how you're selling sports paraphernalia, or is it just a retail store? I mean, is there something creative or an area of sporting goods that you're expanding into?
Well, I can't speak from the operational side of it, I can only speak from the construction side of it, but as far as our interiors, our fixtures, if anybody remembers the very first Dunham's on 14 Mile and Northwestern, it was a, you went in there and picked out things out of a box, okay? This place has been getting better and better and better all the time with our exterior design, with our interior design, with our management teams and stuff like that. It's, it's a constant evolving process, and that's, I like to think that if we're succeeding and growing, you know, right now I'm building eight stores, okay? And I have another 10 proposed for next year. So, it's like, we're doing something right here.
Good.
So...
Thank you.
Whereas there's a lot of people that are falling off to the side. I do want to express the fact that if you've seen some of our newer stores, and that's what we're following now, the interiors are, are terrific compared to what 15 years ago, 10 years ago. But it is a constantly evolving, you can't stand still in this business.
Thank you. Were you done, Councilman?
Yes.
Go ready, Councilman.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate what you're looking to do and appreciate what CBL's looking to do, and your point's very well taken about the investment CBL has to make, and that this isn't slapping up a sign. As, as we've been talking around this issue tonight, we're really at a crossroads, right, with retail and large malls, and the issue we have is, and you know this very well because you were part of the Showstack team that built this in 1988, this was kind of Somerset West, right? You know, it was designed with very high-end materials, right, and layout. The, there's no longer the desire, right, for department stores, specialty stores to be in that kind of environment. So, it's, it's a question, this is why I like the referral of Committee of the Whole, it's figuring out, right, how we make Dunham's, and, you know, I think your, your slogan, if I remember, is, you know, great quality, low prices. You know, it's, it's a discount, it's a discounter, right? And there's nothing to be, there's nothing to be ashamed of, somebody that talked about the Livonia roots, right? We're glad to have you here, we're glad that you want to stay in Livonia. There's nothing, you know, embarrassing about that. But, again, going back to when this mall was designed, not one part of the vision or one part of the vision for the tenants, right, was high-quality, low prices. It was, you know, high-quality, right, high-end. So, we, we've got to figure out how we make this look, and, or how we make this work, and how we make it work aesthetically. So, I, I really like the idea of putting it in Committee of the Whole, so we can mull this over, maybe talk to the CBL folks, but, you know, I'm, it's certainly an exciting prospect to no longer have that empty. So, I, I think it's great, and I appreciate what you're doing, and, and just, there's just a conflict inherent, right? Because the mall's very different in, in who it serves and what it is from when it was envisioned and built in 1988.
Thank you. Are you on a timeline, sir, of any kind?
Yes, we're under construction right now. CBL's under construction right now. We plan on, our schedule shows us starting fixturing at the end of this month, on the 26th of August. So, by that time, and our opening is scheduled for 1st of November, mid, 1st to the mid, middle of November.
You want to get that Christmas rush? Yeah, that's a biggie. Yep.
I'm sure the mall would like that, too, you know, just to have, not to have a vacancy in there.
Well, what I'm hearing is you're outside. I don't think there's any questions, and it's been said, about your inside as much as, people aren't happy with the outside. So, we're gonna have to bring you back in and look at it, it looks like. I mean, the vote takes place unless there's some new, new information between now and the 26th, or it's, you know, most members have offered and agreed with Committee of the Whole. So, you know, if you have a different design in mind perhaps, or want to talk to some of the members, that might be helpful. Okay, so as it stands right now, we have a Committee of the Whole, and that's the only direction we have, is...
Approving and denying, too.
Did we have denying, too?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, and approving, sorry, sorry, we have three. What I heard was Committee of the Whole. All right. Is there anyone else from the audience wishing to speak to this? Okay. If not, sir, thank you very much, and again, please take a business card, we're available and able to talk if need be there, okay? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Counsel, we are on item 26, which is our last item. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance number 543, as amended from the Department of Law, a Small Cell Wireless Facility Zoning Regulation. Mr. Burney, excuse me.
Bottom line, this, the, as the council's aware, the feds and the state have pretty much taken away our authority to do anything. So, this is an attempt to give the city engineer the opportunity for the permitting of the small cells, which we're not quite sure exactly in the long run where we're gonna be allowed to do or not to do. It's an attempt, because Mr. Zelensick, Zelensick obviously has the expertise in this for the permitting on it. So, the idea is to try to get some control over where small cells can go in and if there's any variance on them. That's the purpose of it.
So, what do you want us to do?
Well, the law department would suggest an approving resolution. Since we drafted it, we thought it was pretty good.
All right, good. Good work.
Is it ready for first reading, though?
Yes.
No, it has to be referred to the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay. It's got to go to the planning. Okay. All righty.
I'll offer that resolution.
Want to offer that? Okay. So, Councilman Meakin has offered that, and eventually then we'll go through the process. And if there's no objection to any of that, we're back to audience communication. Anyone wishing from the audience, the three of you? Anything you want to share with us tonight? No? Okay.
It's just the design in front of the building.
You want to do the design in front of the building? No, no, we already did that. Okay.
Love to hear your thoughts on it.
Yes.
It just looks like Cinderella's castle.
Cinderella's castle, okay.
Look at the picture online.
All right.
Adjourned, so we can discuss it more.
I think we better hit this gamble right about now. Okay, we're adjourned.